Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Yes. Mr. Bureau Patel.
Yes, present.
Mr. Romano.
Present.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White.
Ms. White? Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel. Ms. Anjana Patel. Mr. Lugo?
Here.
President Patel, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education's administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. At this time, the Board is going to adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA 10412, Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential personnel and board matters and student matters. We have a motion to adjourn to privileged session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion. Mr. Romano, Mr. Schneider. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Voice vote?
Voice vote, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to privileged session. We expect to come back once it's over. This point, the Board will reconvene to open session. Motion to reconvene to open session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to announce this week that our own very own rock star Superintendent Dr. Alderelli has been awarded Class Link's New Jersey's 2024 Visionary Superintendent Award. This prestigious honor recognizes leaders who are dedicated to creating innovative practices that will shape the future of our students and our schools. That's great. And we congratulate him and are very proud of his work. And that's why there is no wonder we keep calling him Rock Star. So I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all the strategic planning teams sitting here, all the leaders, and their tremendous efforts and hard work in charting the course of our district's progress over the next five years through Vision 2030. All your dedication ensures that our students and community will continue to thrive. And all the principals, administrators, everyone, all the supervisors who are here, thank you so much. And thank you for contributing towards this great cause. I also want to express my deep gratitude to Heather Daniel and her intern Sophia for their outstanding work in designing and implementing our new district website, which is going to be released very soon, in a few moments. And I'm pretty sure the whole district is going to love it. Their efforts have enhanced our communications, and it makes it easier for everyone to stay connected and informed. And together, we are all paving a way for a brighter future. That being said, I will give it to our Rock Star, Dr. Alderelli.
All right. Thank you so much for that introduction there, Board President Patel. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a few presentations this evening, all of which are extremely important and encompass, you know, everything that we believe here in Edison Township. The first one is acknowledging the retirement of an Edison High School jersey, number 24, an individual by the name of James Muldowney. On his behalf, I'd like to actually call up our EHS Athletic Supervisor and Director, Mr. Dave Sandell, if you want to come up. And I know you've got a brief piece to talk about. And I think it's definitely required to formally read the resolution, which I'll do right afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli.
You got it.
Dave Sandell, 50 Boulevard of the Eagles, proud 1990 Edison graduate, and your Supervisor of Athletics for Edison High School, Thomas Jefferson, and Herbert Hoover. I prepared my comments to stay on. Sometimes will be long and winding, like the road in life, but I'll prepare the comments here. In my 31 years as a Board employee, this is the first time I've spoken at the dais at a Board of Ed meeting, so it must be something important to me. I'd like to first thank Dr. Alderelli, our Superintendent, and the entire Board of Education for supporting my idea of retiring Coach Muldowney's 24, number 24, across the entire athletic department. This is one of the highest honors I can think of for an individual. I would be remiss, also, in not thanking Judy Cox for the tremendous help in penning tonight's resolution. Thank you, Judy. No other EHS athlete in any sport will ever wear number 24 in honor of James Muldowney. That's how much he meant to Edison High Athletics. He was truly a local boy and makes good story. Jim graduated from EHS in '73 and came back to teach and coach in 1981, retiring in June of 2018 as our District Supervisor of Health, PE, and Driver Ed. A pretty impressive run for a kid from Taft Avenue. Along the way, Coach Muldowney positively impacted the lives of thousands of student athletes, whether it be in phys ed class, on the baseball diamond, basketball court, or soccer field. Jim's commitment to excellence and getting the best out of his student athletes was realized with perhaps his greatest team, the 1993 Edison Baseball Team. That team finished the season ranked number one in the state and number four in the United States. That, to my knowledge, being the Edison sports historian, that's the highest ranking for a New Jersey team in the history of the USA Today Top 25 Rankings. New Jersey's a notoriously cold-weather state for baseball, so to end up fourth in the nation is pretty impressive. He set the goal standard for coaches and administrators in this district. Quite simply, he is what's great about Edison High and what's great about the Edison Public Schools. If you have a minute tonight, I urge everyone to read his accomplishments on the Edison Hall of Fame plaque in our lobby. Quite impressive for a South Side kid who just wanted to make an impact at his alma mater. In closing, I would like to thank you all once again. I'd also like to have the Muldowney family rise up to be acknowledged. White Ann is a FDR Para at the FDR Building. Mary Lynn is a Grade Four teacher at Washington Elementary, and our varsity softball coach here in Assistant Girl Soccer. Anthony is the pride of the Montgomery School System. And Jersey Joe is a big wig at JB Hunt. So once again, the Muldowneys are well represented. We will have a formal dedication ceremony at halftime of our home football game against North Brunswick on Friday, September 20. And I'll be sending out invites to all of you. And once again, I really appreciate this. If anybody was ever, and a few of you up there on the stage, I know Brian's a '95 Eagle, Doug, you're a '97 Eagle, you know, Ginny, I know you knew him pretty well. He was a legend, you know, not only in our town, in the county, but in the state of New Jersey. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sandell. I know it's an attachment to the agenda, but I think it's fitting to formally read the resolution, if I may be permitted to do so, Board President. Whereas it is with a profound sense of loss that on May 21, 2024, the Edison community noted with sorrow the passing of Mr. James Diamond Jim Muldowney. And whereas Mr. James Muldowney was not only a 1973 graduate of Edison High School, but also a dedicated teacher at Edison High School from 1981 to 2000, the Edison Athletic Director from 2000 to 2008, and the Edison Supervisor of Physical Education and Health from 2008 to 2018, a member of the New Jersey Coaches' Hall of Fame, a charter member of the Edison High School Athletic Hall of Fame in 2006. And whereas under his dynamic leadership as the Edison High School Baseball Coach from 1998 to 2000, Mr. James Muldowney won 24 total state championships, 10 Red Division titles, seven GMC tournaments, five Central Jersey Group Four titles, and two overall Group Four titles, with a final record of 275 to 75, with his team winning 20 games in 10 straight seasons. And whereas James Muldowney is considered by most to be the greatest high school baseball coach in Middlesex County's history, and now for there it be resolved that to memorialize the outstanding accomplishments of Mr. James Diamond Jim Muldowney, the Edison Township Board of Education by this resolution approves the retirement of James Muldowney's jersey number 24 throughout all of Edison High School athletic teams using uniform numbers. And be it further resolved that a ceremony will commence on Friday, September 20, 2024, at the halftime program of Edison High School's home football game. And a copy of this resolution will be presented to the Muldowney family in commemoration and appreciation for Jim's outstanding diligent and dedicated service to the students, families, and staff of the Edison Public School District. And that a copy of this resolution be recorded in the permanent minutes of the Edison Township Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much again. Thanks to Mr. Sandell, Ms. Cox, as well as the Muldowney family. We transition now to kind of a labor of love of mine, to be honest with you. I know that I've actually been really excited with all of the work that's been done, not only behind the scenes, but in concert with our consultants, Bill and Stacy Adams, who I can't thank enough for the work that we've done in relationship to our strategic plan, which we implemented in early fall of 2023. And the culminating activity is the final presentation to the Board of Education and its final report, as well as a report out by the action teams. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight, I was recently attended a national superintendents conference where the entire focus of that conference was strategic planning. And it was in June, so it really resonated with me because we were kind of at the finish line in setting our goals. Not only is this a highly utilized strategy in all organizations, it transcends organizations, but it literally shapes the landscape for school districts, right? It identifies trends, it identifies challenges that the school districts face, it sets us on a path for what we identify to be the mission and the vision. It guides our educational practices. And more importantly, for us, it really signifies where our field of education is going is where our district is going. It's like an enablement tool to provide us with an opportunity to execute a plan that many members of our community, and Bill and Stacy are going to attest to this, we had overwhelming participation. I can't thank the committees, the advisory committee, anybody that filled out a survey, anybody that participated in any level that contributed to this plan, because I really wanted to see what the community felt. I cannot thank the administrators that are currently in the audience right now. It is an absolute pleasure to, yeah, you should give yourselves a round of applause for the work that you do each and every single day, right alongside of our teachers. I thank you so much for your participation in everything that you do. It is, you make my job easy in not only your work ethic, but your commitment to the students of Edison Township. So without any further hesitation, I am going to turn the microphone over to Bill and Stacy Adams, who I've had the opportunity to work with over the course of the last 11 months, right? And it's been an absolute pleasure. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Alderelli. And thank you, everyone, the Board of Education. It is an honor to be here, and what a night to be here as well. Congratulations to your father and the retiring of the jersey. I am thrilled if we can get to get moving on this because really, although we've been working at this for quite some time, going back all the way to December, the real work now begins, right? And I'm going to try to do my best here to swing back and forth because the work that was engaged in this process, as was already mentioned, was really all of you in this room and others that are out there in the community. And so with that, yes, we started back in December last year. We did a whole flow through that winding road, as was mentioned, and it landed us to, oh, yeah, we need to go back. Yes, it landed us to that participation that Dr. Alderelli was talking about. You had over 5,000 participants in this process. Wow, you did one round of applause. I really think you need to do it again because that is really quite an accomplishment in and of itself. And what I want to point out to you is that that's just the first two points, the engagement and the focus phase of this process. The execution phase, which is what we'll be talking about tonight, the plans for that, there's so many more opportunities for others to be a part of this, those in this room, those in all the schools, those in the community. And I think that's what part of the exciting part of being One Edison is all about. So in order, though, to move the process along, obviously, we couldn't have 5,000 people in the room all the time, right? Nothing would ever. But what we did is we took 30 members, a cross-section of the community, and we formed an advisory committee. Those are the members that are up there on this. If you're here in the room, could you just raise your hand real quick? Yeah, right on. Woo! Now let me just point out, they did a lot of the heavy lifting throughout this process. So please keep that in mind, especially as we look back or we look at the action plans that are forthcoming. We met several nights during the month of March, and clearly, some of that time, no pain, no gain, but I think you'll be pleased with the outcomes we're. So what we did during that month of March is we looked at, when I talk about heavy lifting, the findings. So through the process, we did a lot of engagement, as we've already recognized. And then we met with the advisory committee, and we talked about the data, the district data. We did a look back. And then we looked at all the perception information that was garnered through that engagement phase. And those 5,000 participants, or at least a large part of that, was a part of our surveys and our focus groups. The group, the committee, definitely spent time hashing through a lot of information. Sometimes it was information overload, sometimes it was very engaging. But what it certainly allowed is for all voices to be heard and to work through that process to develop where we're going with the proposed vision, the proposed mission, our portrait of a graduate, and our action plans. So. One of the things before we moved into that, though, is we looked at the strengths, the challenges, the opportunities, and the threats that were in front of us as a part of this district-wide community. I'm not going to go through all of these together, but we will highlight the strengths because education is a people business, and it's certainly at the top of the list was that the strengths of the district were the students and the staff, right? The people that we are, that are serving and being served was recognized as the number one strength. And then, as you'll see, you're coming from a great foundation. There's a high graduation rate, you've got high standards, you've got all kinds of recognitions. And in particular, we also want to point out of the experience and the expertise that exists not only in the school district, but also throughout the community. And I think that's really important here as we continue along. And then we did take a moment to check out our challenges because in it as much as that we are strong, One Edison, there are some challenges that exist. And again, I'm not going to go through each one of these points directly, but I will make note of some of the overarching challenges that the advisory team had to consider as they processed all the information and made some decisions. And those were some inconsistencies in systems. There were also recognized that there is some concern about equity for all students to have the same opportunities, as much as there's so many opportunities here in Edison Township. There was some concern that all students need varying and different ways to be engaged, to rise to their greatest potential. And then, obviously, with everything that's happening after COVID and just our world as we know it, the concern was for mental health and wellness. But underpinning most of these challenges here was the challenge with regard to your infrastructure. I can only wrap this up in one statement that I can paraphrase from one of your students that said, you know, whatever's happening in my life outside, I come to school and I want to be ready, and I'm here, I want to get to my class on time, but I start at one end of the building, and I have to make my way across to the other side. And in the meantime, there's a traffic jam. And so just little basic things like that with regard to the infrastructure and the movement of kids and their experiences here in some of the buildings, there are definitely some challenges that need to be addressed in order to support some of the other areas of these plans forthcoming. So with that being said, the team worked together, the advisory team hammered through the existing mission. The existing mission was tweaked to offer this proposed mission, not yet, but the next slide will offer the vision. And then we also, as a part of the advisory team, tackled the portrait of a graduate. So with this being said, can I do the corny thing that we always do? All right. So everyone, if you would please with me, and I'm going to step away, this is the proposed mission from the advisory committee. Can you say it with me on the count of three? One, two, three.
The public schools of Edison Township will create a safe, supportive learning environment that empowers every student to actively contribute to a dynamic, interconnected, global society. Our commitment is to ensure that all students achieve at their highest level of academic, social, and emotional success.
And with that, the proposed vision. On the count of three. One, two, three.
Supporting and enhancing the educational, psychological, and social needs for well-rounded students, Edison Township Public Schools, a premier school district, will cultivate innovative teaching and learning experiences for all students.
Wonderful. And we would encourage that you use this at your board meetings, at every meeting that is conducted internally within the district. And obviously, you're in great hands with Heather to promote the vision and the mission, should it be adopted. So our next slide. The target areas as an outcome of all the information that we worked through as the advisory committee were five: infrastructure, facilities, and finance, programs, pathways, and proficiencies, wellness, engagement, and portrait of a graduate. At this juncture, once that was determined by the advisory committee, action teams were organized. There were actually well over 52. I think we were actually closer to 60 team members. Again, a great cross-section of team members worked on all of the action teams, from parents, students, community members, local business people, administration, the instructional staff, support staff, and government, and first responders. Exciting to be a part of these teams. And with this, it's my honor to turn this over to the action team co-chairs to present the action teams that will guide you from this juncture forward. So I believe our infrastructure and facilities and finance team, John Toth and Jackie Beechey?
Perfect. Jackie, you coming down to the podium? All right, I'll meet you over there. So the infrastructure, facilities, and finance team, can we bring up our slide? This is all our team members. I'm not going to read them verbatim. I'm sure we'll post this.
Will be posted on the website.
This is our support of our vision, right? We're going to develop some goals through collaboration in our meetings, of which we did. The first goal, I'm not going to, actually, you guys want to read it like we did? No, I'm just kidding. I'm going to paraphrase, so to speak. We're basically going to invest in our infrastructure to support safe, innovative, educational environments for all students. That's the goal. And some of the implementation and ways we're going to implement this and also measure it is partnering with district architects to update the long-range facilities plan. That's actually been ongoing. Complete a demographic impact study, update the district technology plan, and develop, Mr. Romano, a long-range district transportation plan. That's one of the things that are really important here in Edison to our kids. Jackie, anything to add?
No, I just think it's important to know that this, the infrastructure, facility, finance, really is the foundation of your strategic plan.
I would call it the bedrock. I like that better. It's actually the bedrock.
It's what supports the other initiatives that you're going to hear tonight. So go ahead.
Excellent. The next goal, again, not going to read it verbatim, it'll be posted, but obviously, this is seeing that we're going to develop budgets and spend finances in a fiscally responsible, transparent way that supports students and student programs. So that's developing budgets with flat state aid in mind and adherence to budget caps. I do believe that our state aid windfalls at some time are going to run out. Investigate alternative funding sources for capital projects and program growth. Building budgets in collaboration amongst district administrators. That used to be done kind of in a silo, and I think that everybody in here, all of these administrators are a budget manager and take ownership of their own budget. And then finally, maintain an unmodified audit opinion on state and federal audits. This is so the public and the Board at large knows that we're doing things in a fiscally responsible way. Jackie, anything to add?
No, I think it's time that we are going to hand this off to Vennder Gummer and Nicole Halpin for their target area of programs, pathways, and proficiencies.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really, really proud of the work that we did on this. I myself is a product of a career pathway in high school, so I know the impact that it can make on students. And I think these are things that are really going to be able to hit all of our students. So the way we looked at our vision is we broke it up into the different grade bands: exploration of careers, exposure to careers, and training. And all of that is going to lead to real-world success. So you're going to hear the word CTE a lot, so I always like to know what those acronyms are that everyone's talking about. So CTE is Career and Technical Education, and that incorporates a lot of different things. But what we're realizing is there are gaps of our students who are graduating, and our traditional K-12 schools are not filling those gaps for our kids. So this whole part of the plan is to make sure that we are going to be incorporating the skill sets that our students need to be successful in life. And these are those skills that our employers are looking for. And if you're looking at that list, it's hard sometimes to incorporate those into our traditional classrooms. So again, by expanding our programs and our offerings, we're going to try to make sure that our students hit these things that our employers are looking for. So Goal One is our P5 grade band. And what are we doing in this? We're really giving them exposure to careers. What are careers? What are ways that they can build on that as they go through middle school and high school? We're increasing career awareness. We're increasing STEM. STEM is something that can make all of those other skill sets come to life. And we're going to figure out ways that we can incorporate career awareness into our curriculums. Middle school, one of my favorite grades to work with, the exposure to careers. So how are we doing this? Increasing programs, increasing elective options. You all heard that we're increasing different options for our kids to be able to choose. And that's all exposure to new career options. We're looking at summer career exploration camp, where kids are going to be actually able to try the electives at the high school while they're in middle school, take advantage of our auto shop, come to our culinary arts area, and see what's available for them. And the big thing is our elective fairs. We realized our middle school students don't know what their options are when they get to the high school, and making sure that they're aware of that, as well as our counseling services as well. And then we get to the high school, our 912. This is really exciting. We are looking to start our career pathways. We're looking at ones in business, logistics, which is transportation, and hospitality, three of our really more popular elective choices. So our students are already interested. So what do we do more for them? And that includes course pathways, professional credentials that they're going to graduate with to bring with them into the workforce, looking at share time, co-op situations, and then even being able them to leave school early and then go to work in the field. And that's it for pathways and programs. We're going to call up Dr. Tui and Kate Gausman now.
Well, hello, everybody. Thanks for having us up here tonight. Wellness as a whole was very strongly represented in our survey data. And Kate and I just wanted to thank the Board of Education, our community, for the opportunity to address this issue through the strategic plan. So our team, we had a really solid cross-section of administrators, parents, community members, guidance, CST, even a medical doctor, a physician that lived in the area. So it was a good group. Shout out to Mr. Rivera for being part of it on our committee. Appreciate the feedback. So our vision itself was to ensure that all staff and students experience a physically and emotionally safe environment. And our vision was pretty tight. So when we get to our first goal, it aligned really closely. What we're trying to do is ensure a safe environment for our staff and our kids. And we try to do that a couple different ways. One, we want to expand wellness services and coordination for students and staff throughout the district. What that looks like is creating an integrated staff wellness program, securing mental health professionals at the professionals at the elementary level internally, and expanding our secondary partnerships to make sure that we have those mental health professionals to address our students' needs, grade six through 12. Expanding our enrollment department outreach, an idea of a co-responder. If we have an attendance officer go to a house, and you know, there may be issues outside of attendance, perhaps a social worker or another mental health professional could help with that. We want to evaluate telehealth resources and then ultimately coordinate that service and staffing throughout the district. Going along with the safe environment, we have to take a look at our actual physical spaces. The committee suggested we latched on to this idea of conducting systemic safety audits through all of our buildings. And then finally, from an instructional programming standpoint, making sure that we're conducting implicit executive functioning and SEL instruction in all of our classrooms. Now, I'm not going to hit the action steps for each one because they're all very similar. We have a few stages. We want to plan to start out. I gave some, we gave some examples of what that planning looks like. We want to make sure that we budget accordingly. The business office would like to hear that, you know, in public education, finances are not the only decision, but they're involved in every decision. And then finally, implementation and evaluation. We're going to implement the programs on the left-hand side and evaluate them and adjust as needed throughout the years. So next one. The second goal is to identify and integrate programs to assess and address stress and anxiety. This was a big aha moment. Not only was it reflected in our survey data, but the committee as a whole said, our students are under a lot of stress. First thing we do is need to understand what's causing that stress, so pursuing the idea of a needs assessment for our students, partnering and collaborating with local mental health agencies. We have a lot of support in the community. And then leveraging our parent organizations, our PTO, our parent academy, to provide events and supports for our students outside of our walls. Again, we have a plan stage, a budget stage, an implement stage, and then an evaluate stage. And finally, on the staff side, we want to create a safe environment for our students and staff. And, you know, quite honestly, I was just at a meeting today where we talked about teacher burnout and administrator burnout, and the fact that in order to have a healthy classroom, you have to have a healthy staff room. So similar to the students, we want to assess the needs of our staff and evaluate compensation and benefits that may fall outside of salary. I mean, that speaks to the staff wellness initiative we were talking about. There's language to indicate that we're thinking about, that's exploration there, exploring a district health clinic. There are models for this throughout the state, and in year one, that's something we'd be going out to visit and see if it's feasible, expanding the mentorship opportunities for our instructional staff, and then really just trying to focus on a cultural shift. You know, from a demographic standpoint, the individuals entering the workforce right now aren't always focused on benefits and salary. They're focused on finding meaning. They're focused on feeling supported, and that's something we can do as educators. So again, action steps. We're going to plan for these initiatives. We're going to budget and make sure Mr. Toth's office is on board, roll them out, and then adjust as necessary. So thank you so much for the wellness plan and letting us do it. And with that, I want to introduce Dr. Huss and Ms. Daniel for engagement.
So it's a pleasure for me to represent our target area of engagement. We often started our meetings by saying, wow, look around this room, or look around this Zoom, and look at the group we have together. It's the best group of all the action plans, and I'll stand by that to this minute. Had Anjana Patel's in the room, Narav is in the room. I think I saw Jen back there in the room. I hate calling out people because you always forget somebody, but Maria Orchid's usually here and maybe in the room. But you can see it's an eclectic group of parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and even a student who provided their insight into helping us form this goal and all the actions related to it. The vision basically is to do exactly as the goal is called, improve engagement. And I think I was lucky to lead this committee and have Heather as my co-chair because she's already started and has a goal for a lot of the ways the district is going to improve our engagement. And you'll see after this presentation of the strategic plan, she's unveiling the new website. So one of our action plans is to improve and expand the website, and it's already done. So I feel like I've accomplished so much already, and really, it's thanks to Heather. So if you want to go to Goal One, the vision's encapsulated in all three goals. Goal One, when we broke everything down, was to enhance our decision-making, really by collaborating better with our students, our family, and our staff member, and to foster that bond of inclusivity, right? We have a very diverse community, and we talked about how some people are marginalized and left out. We want to bring in as many voices as we can. Some decisions we make, and it's just with the board. Other decisions we make, it's just with the administrators. Other decisions we make is we hear from a really outspoken group of parents, but we don't get input from everybody. So the goal here was to try to diversify our ways of communicating with the community and getting as much input and as much feedback as we can when doing our decision-making, really trying to involve as many stakeholders as possible. The way we want to do that is to improve our ways of surveying. We have such advanced technologies nowadays to distribute surveys, but we were very cognizant and thoughtful about making surveys and using them to our advantage where we don't reach a saturation point. As many of you know, you survey too much, people stop participating, and then you go from really useful feedback to no feedback at all. So we do want to work on improving our surveys, putting out surveys in multiple languages, putting out surveys in multiple formats, and even going into communities and talking to people and eliciting input face-to-face. So again, Goal One, get feedback from as many people as possible, just to simplify that. Goal Two was really interesting, focused on students and improving transitions for all the students, really from school to school, grade to grade, especially in those big grades, fifth to sixth, ninth to tenth, I'm sorry, eighth to ninth, and trying to create cohesive bonds. You have 12 elementary schools that then funnel into four middle schools, four middle schools that then go down to two high schools. And very often, more often than not, people are in silos, and they don't know one another until they move up into those next grades. And what was an aha moment for us that we took away, some of the things that we used to do here in Edison were very good at helping us accomplish this goal that went away, whether from just overtime and attrition, people leaving and ideas leaving with those people, or COVID blowing up something like the Camp Bernie trip that all fifth graders used to go on and create bonds with one another before going to sixth grade. So one of the major goals is to find those best practices, bring them back, and identify other best practices that aren't being done and implement them. And that takes us to Goal Three. And Goal Three is really with the engagement, not just take feedback in, but push out the message, right? We just read a mission out loud. We just read a vision out loud. After we just read that out loud, is anyone going to hear it again? Probably, but maybe not. And our goal here is to make sure that they do. Because I've been in many districts, and I've been around long enough, long in the tooth these days, and I've read visions and I've read mission statements. They were on paper, and you never see them again once you spend hours and hours forming them. So our third goal is to really promote that, promote it in the community, and then garner support in the community to make sure that mission and that vision is put out and is accomplished. And one of the big ones that comes away from here is the creation of an education foundation, and our goal will be to create an ed foundation to partner with the abundance of businesses and, you know, business owners and community groups that we have in Edison, and bring them into the schools and let them feel like a part of the schools. And again, it'll help promote our mission, but create that bond and some cohesiveness. So really robust goals. We have one more. The fourth one is to create that partnership with the stakeholders. And when we say stakeholders, there's a lot to that, right? Community members, parents, people who've lived here for 60 years, who don't have students in the school anymore, who still have a lot of pride in their community, and figure out ways to get input from everyone and to help them form what, this is a 2030. That's scary to say, right? The goal is 2030, mission 2030. So by that time, what is the goal of what Edison schools will look like and what our students come out looking like? And it's a perfect segue into the next action group, which is the Portrait of a Graduate, because by 2030, kids who are now in, what, seventh grade, sixth grade, will be our graduates. What do we want them to look like? To figure that out, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Cohen and Mr. McGrath.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. What do we want our students to look like? We want them to look like Mr. McGrath. So we're happy to talk about the great work of the Portrait of a Graduate. We also, just like all the committees, had a real eclectic, diverse group, a lot of really powerful voices. We had some of the richest discussions with this group that Mr. McGrath and I have had in our careers. After the first session, we both called each other, like that was just an incredibly powerful discussion that we really benefited and learned of us. So we really appreciated the contributions of the members. I want to give a particular shout-out to McHalen and Bill, our student reps, from Edison High, and JP. They spoke with such insight, maturity, and grace, representing their thoughts really clearly, respectfully, but also representing their peers as well, not just speaking for themselves. Student voice was a real big part of this work. So we'll go to our next slide. This action team had a big task. They've got to take the input from so many stakeholders and sort of put it all together to make something that was reflective, not just of what the strengths of Edison are, the values, and the high expectations of our students for the future, but to talk about in our discussions, like, you know, we're preparing our students for success in a world that's going to be very different even just five years from now. That workplace will be so different. There'll be jobs that didn't exist when kids graduated from here and they get out of college, or there'll be jobs that no longer exist. So it's what are the characteristics that will lead them to success in an ever-changing world that's evolving all the time? A big part of the voice, when you see the different sources of data up there, was the student input. We had an advisory meeting with over 20 students from the high schools, and their voice rang very loud and clear. But again, we took that into consideration with a lot of good information and came up with these six characteristics. I won't read them off, but I will make an allusion to one of the previous slides that Nicole Halpin presented for the Pathways Committee, where they talked about the top 10 employable skills. And you see critical thinking and problem solving all over that, adaptive and resilient all over that, effective communication all over that. You didn't necessarily see emotional intelligence, but you can see that in so many other research studies that show what does it mean to be successful in the workplace and life now. So I think they did an incredible job in mapping out what we want for all of our graduates. And then did something unique by turning, rather than bullet point list of descriptors, came up with these mantras, more powerful statements. So when we are really able to dive deeper and say, what does this actually mean? What are we going to teach our students to be able to do or be? And we can break that up into developmentally appropriate age groups. When we talk about being emotionally intelligent, we want all students to be self-aware, well-regulated, and socially conscious where they can read the room. Critical thinking and problem solving. You saw that twice on the list of most employable characteristics. Getting our kids to be academically prepared and to be critical thinkers, but not just critical thinkers and problem solvers, but innovative doers, right? It's one thing for they can learn to think about content at high levels. It's another thing if they can turn that into something of value. And then, of course, being adaptive and resilient also on that list. You'll see that being emotionally intelligent, critical thinking, problem solving, and adaptive resilience are intertwined. They all lead to the other. We want our kids to be academic risk-takers. We want them to feel that confidence in themselves, but also be willing to fail and learn from failure. When it comes to being an effective communicator, this is where our language arts programming is such a strong program as it is right now. We're going to expand upon that and have our kids be effective communicators in every content and every context. We want our students engaged. We want them to be not only just taking what they learn and making contributions at school, but outside school, in the community, and get them involved in service learning. And lastly, as resourceful lifelong learners. We want them to be able to give back to their community in ways that they are the role models. We want our older students, our high school students and our middle school students, to be able to impart what it means to be reflective of this Portrait of a Graduate for our younger students. Whatever they attempt to teach, they've learned 90% of, so it's lifelong learning, and they'll be able to give back. And with that, I'm going to pass us on to Mr. McGrath.
So I'd like to thank the Board of Ed, Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Cohen, and everybody who participated in this process related to Portrait of a Graduate. As I see it, my charge tonight is not to read slides to you, but it's to help everybody who's here and who's at home to connect to this work. The reason that that's so important is this end result, all of the folks who spoke here this evening before me directed all of that work towards this, towards this portrait. And I think it's important that I start by explaining what a Portrait of a Graduate is not. It is not a singular mold that produces human carbon copies that go out and do the same thing in this world. The Portrait of a Graduate is essentially the end result of a listening process that everybody here engaged in, in a very thoughtful way, so that we could collect the ideas and the experiences of our students, of our parents, of our educators in the community. And the end result is what we have here. On the screen are our goals. And to summarize them, they revolve around the individual students leaving with the skills and the knowledge that we feel as a community, they will need to be successful. And baked into that are some of the accountability measures that we will implement over time to ensure that this comes to fruition. If you could go the next slide, please? So our takeaways, they're vast. First and foremost, if I asked everybody in the room and those viewing at home to envision that caring adult who, when they were a child, leveraged their resources, their time and their energy to make them or help them meet their potential, you could probably all do that. The takeaway is, as a system, we have the ability to do that. If we approach this in a thoughtful way, and we listen to what has been said and all the data that's been collected, we can systematize that and put ourselves in a position where as a system, we're leveraging our resources and our humans to really give our kids what they deserve. The voices of our students were profound. Through the work that we did, we heard over and over again that they thrive on those high academic expectations, and they appreciate all the support from the teachers and all the staff here in Edison. But they also long for an environment that's not high pressure, and one that holds those high expectations, but also provides enough support around them so they don't feel that it's competitive, but it's iterative, and that they're moving in the direction of their dreams and the things that they want to develop. And that came through, and really, I think that the work that we did will move us in that direction. So there's 18,000 reasons that we did this. This is the first step towards bringing all of this home. So with that, I'm going to ask Stacy and Bill Adams, who were the consultants. Stacy was up earlier, and Bill was integral in bringing this to Edison and keeping us organized. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and they have some closing comments.
Well, thank you, action teams, action chairs, and certainly the advisory committee and everyone involved in this. I'm the closer. So my job is to bring you the 10 recommendations that came out of this and eight suggestions. I'll try to do that in a concise way. All of you will have access, including members of the audience and those at home. This will be posted on the website. It's a 39-page document, but it's supported by literally 450 slides and eight different presentations. So we come to tonight with a lot of hard work behind us, but the real hard work begins from tonight on for implementation. So as we look at that, the first three recommendations really are together. You know, adopt the mission and vision. The mission really says who you are, what you do, who you do it for, and what the end result is. The vision, where you want to go in the next three to five or even seven years. So we're recommending, with the effort that went in, with the representation from across the community with both internal and external stakeholders, that those two be adopted. And then we're also recommending, as part of this whole process, that once you adopt the action plans, and we're recommending you adopt those B annual, these are the first two-year action plans, that you agree to quarterly review two-year action plans, that you agree to quarterly review them, assess the metrics that were set, where the metrics met, if not, what needs to be done to meet them. And then, we recommend that if, as you achieve some of them, then you look at some of the objectives and goals that were not put in to tonight's action plans, because it was too much to grab onto at this time to reach the vision of the future. So, those quarterly reviews become very important. And then, at the end of the first year, do an assessment, and then decide where you're going to go for the next two years. So, it's an ongoing process. As was stated about the mission statement, if you don't say it, if you don't follow it, then it just becomes something else that goes up on a shelf, and that's what sometimes happens with strategic plans. So, those first three steps are very important to moving forward. And so, they're recommendations one, two, and three. And then, your tagline, One Edison. As we look at One Edison, if you really want to achieve One Edison, look carefully, as Mr. Toth said, when you, that infrastructure facilities plan, that's the key to making the other four happen. And actually, the other three actionable for the students, and then the engagement piece, to make sure the community's involved. So, as you look at that, really, three things need to happen if you're going to reach that One Edison for everybody. One is that some of these facilities' needs have to be met. Intermediate, immediate, intermediate, and long-term. And as you look at those facility needs, you're looking at crowding. The hallways Stacy was talking about was at J.P. Stevens. Those hallways weren't made for the number of students in that building. So, those things need to be done in order for the other things to happen. So, that's number one. And then, while there's some really great things, and these action teams did some really outstanding things, there's some silos in a district. And those silos really need to be broken down. You need a systemized model. And I know Dr. Adorelli is working on a leadership model that will knock down those silos and make more efficient, and actually allow some even greater things that are happening to some of the things that are really happening already. That will also, as part of this, require the action teams, which almost had to work because of the timeline independently. They've got to coordinate. There is some duplication, we know that. So, there's some things that need to be done there to make that happen. And then, obviously, the engagement piece, and Heather and the staff are already incorporating the mantra, and I think you'll even hear about some of that in the website presentation. So, they're the first four recommendations. Fifth recommendation is to embed the Portrait of a Graduate in the culture of the Edison Township School District, in literally everything you do. There were six target areas mentioned by the co-chairs. For each of those target areas, you really want to look at the academic skills, the social skills, the life skills, the emotional skills that are needed when students exit kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and so on, to reach the Portrait of a Graduate. That could ultimately, over the next two, three, or even five years, drive your entire curriculum to reach the Portrait of a Graduate that would let, on an individual basis, every Edison Township student reach their full potential, whatever that full potential is, not as a cookie cutter, but to be the best they can be. So, that's recommendation five. And then, the communications piece. If you don't stay connected with the community, you won't get the support of the community, especially as you look at what may be some cost in the future. And we'll talk about the need to be innovative and creative in that area. But you have a very strong engagement plan. That needs to be pursued immediately, and I think that next step will occur very shortly. As you look at each of the five action plans, each of those plans are interconnected, and we recommend from this point on that they be totally coordinated, so the duplication is eliminated, and so that the most is made of the resources that are available. Actually, as you look at then the action plans, and you talk about providing staff with the skill sets they need, professional development in the future should be driven by each of these action plans, three in particular. The three in the program pathways, the Portrait of a Graduate, and certainly the wellness part of it. All of your professional development moving forward should be centered around those, if you take the strategic plan to heart. And then, we recommend, and this is an easy one for you, the board, to achieve, we recommend taking a couple of minutes at every board meeting and talk about the next step. Beginning in September, if you implement and adopt a resolution tonight, if you implement, start at your September board meeting. Take five minutes, and just get one little piece of an update as to what's happening with a piece of the strategic plan. And then, if the facilities and infrastructure plan's going to be met, you're going to need to be creative, certainly with budgeting and how resources are utilized. And I know some initial steps have already been taken, as you have an architect looking at what some of the needs are. But as you do that, finance is going to be important, but looking at the organizational structure, looking at staffing is going to be important. So, all of that needs to be considered from a financial responsible side as you look at costs that are associated. The one thing that I kind of skipped by on a couple of the action plans, they're all great plans. Couple of them need to be focused a little bit more on budget and staff resources, because you're going to be working on the 25, 26 budget very shortly, if not already. And we know that it may require some reallocation of existing resources in the 24, 25 budget to move forward. So, there are the 10 recommendations, and I'll hit just very quickly on the eight suggestions We're recommending that to keep the public informed as part of the engagement process, that you consider a dashboard that has the goals on them, so the governing body, you, the board, will have access to those at all times, so that certain parts of it would be available at all times to the leadership team, the cabinet, certainly the district staff, parents, students. And we believe that's one way, as part of the effort you're making with the website, to keep the information out there, to keep the community engaged, and to keep community in support, especially as you may have some resource needs over the next couple of years, especially as some of the state funding drives up that you're currently getting. So, the dashboard is one option that we're recommending, we're suggesting you take a look at. And then, certainly, as strategic planning updates are made, as you make these quarterly checks, they ought to be published in a prominent place. Get them on the website, get them on the dashboard, if you go in that direction. And then, the next suggestion was not part of the Advisory Committee, but you're already doing some great things with safety, security. We recommend continuing the efforts around safety and security. And then, talent recruitment, and retention, and certainly onboarding of talent. And one of the things that did come out is, as you are recruiting, to make a greater attempt even at recruiting staff that look like the community, that look like the students that are being served as part of that. We also, where there needs to be a little bit more specificity in some of the action plans is to move forward, and some of that gets to budgeting. And then, as we just look at the last couple of things together, we've presented some resources to help as you move forward. With the Portrait of a Graduate in particular, one of the resources we've provided is some work that we did in South Jersey in Washington Township back in 2018, where they actually implemented their Portrait of a Graduate through K-12. We also provided information on the Utah Department of Education work that they've done, and it's work that's being looked at nationally. We just suggest, as the teams move forward, they look at some of those documents. Another document we've provided in the resources, and you can see these on page 38 of the report, is the AASA National Report for Education 2025. And then, there's a group that we're recommending, they're taking a look at Education 250 in the United States. Well, why Education 250? Well, in a couple of weeks, you're going to have some kindergarten students start, and they're going to graduate in 2037. So, as you look at strategic plan, it's not just today, it's about the future. There are recommendations and our suggestions. We're asking that begin with you, the governing body, supporting those. Certainly, we'll address any questions that you may have before you consider anything further, and I turn it back over to Dr. Adorelli.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I, first of all, just want to compliment not only the chairs of the action team for their presentation tonight, I couldn't be more proud of the work that you've done, but everybody that participated in the plan, from the board members that are on this stage, to previous boards of education, to the community members, and to everybody else that donated their time. Bill and Stacy hit the nail right on the head, right? The planning phase is completed, and the most important part now, and probably the most difficult, is implementation, right? This can't be a document that sits on the shelf. This is something that we need to monitor. This is something that we, as a Board of Education, should speak about, as well as an administrative team, speak about at board meetings, highlight in our faculty meetings, as well as our administrative team meetings. So, I do thank you for that. It was an absolute pleasure throughout this process. I don't know if there's any other board member questions, or...
I do. First of all, I want to say thank you for all your work. And I also want to say thank you to the planning teams. I work with some phenomenal professionals in Edison Public Schools. I got to work with some teachers, some administrators, and even some community members as well. So, it was a pleasure actually working with you guys. It's nice admin working with admin, so it was a pretty cool experience. That's all I really wanted to say. But this is actually going to be a five-year plan, and obviously, it's going to be a plan that the administrative team is going to be working on every year. It's a fluid document, I'm guessing. There's going to be changes with resources, finances, and stuff like that, from what I'm hearing. Yes, I'm guessing?
Absolutely. It is a living document, and that's why I said quarterly reviews. Every one of the action plans, and you can see the Cliff Notes version of that in that 39-page document, and then there's also the complete action plans that are available electronically. Each action plan has a metric as to how you measure success. Each action plan's required to have a budget. It's required to have a person or persons or job positions responsible to implement the plan, so that there's accountability across the board.
So, I took a bunch of notes. I'm sorry about the scribble, but I'm just looking at this. So, like the superintendent's role, he's going to be executing oversight. He's going to ensure that the action plans are followed, objectives are pursued, initiatives are launched, they're scheduled. He's also going to be doing progress monitoring, I'm guessing, with his team. These are the terms I'm hearing. Problem solving, adaptation, providing PD, sustainability. This is stuff that he's going to be doing every year, correct?
Ultimately, the buck stops with the superintendent, and yes, but I assume there are other team members that will be responsible for portions of that happening.
All right. And again, this is a five-year strategic plan that's going to be implemented. So, based on what I heard here, my participation in the process, I'm looking at Eddie now as a New Jersey visionary superintendent. I'm looking, you're very receptive with the evaluation process, too, which I thought was great. And the one thing that really caught my mind yesterday was the Summer Institute in the culture that you're building here, and especially the culture you have with your admin team. I'd like to commend you with that.
Thank you.
But I do know this role for you is tough, and it's a five-year plan, so...
2020, not 2030 sounded so much better. I will tell you, it did take a little bit of licensing to extend it that way. Oh, it's a five-year plan, 2030 sounds much better, right? Thank Ms. Daniel for that.
This is the work I see you have to do, you and your team. This is what I think of you, based on what I've seen with you, just as a person and as a leader. But I also know this is a five-year plan. So, based on this, I wanted to do a motion to the board president and the BA to extend your year, extend you another year for your contract, so you could establish the five-year strategic plan.
I'd like to accept that motion. We'd like to make the motion.
The motion, a second.
Was that for an extra year for me? No, I'm just kidding. I'll throw it out there.
Yeah, yeah, put your glove back on.
All right, here we go. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
I have to abstain, thank you.
Yep. Ms. White, abstention?
I have to abstain as well.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
For our rock star, anytime, yes.
Motion carries.
Sorry, Eddie, I had to do it.
Listen, a little speechless, to be honest with you, and unexpected, so first of all, the work that I've been doing. I'm fortunate to be in this place, to be honest with you. I do believe things happen for a reason, and I've been blessed with having great interactions and relationships with not only Board of Education members, but our administrative team, too. Mr. Rivera, I thank you so much for your kind words and unexpected. I hope my mom is watching tonight, you know? She must be as well, too. I know my dad is probably sleeping, and maybe my wife. So, I really appreciate that, and I'm sure I'll be talking with the board president and our attorney right after this. So, thank you.
We look forward to executing that faster ASAP. So, thank you so much, Mr. Rivera, and thank you all the board members. Some things like this are, is music to my ears. I still can believe in myself, this is what we are doing, but it's amazing. Look forward to executing that, so thank you so much. And we, by second, everything that Mr. Rivera said about your services and the planning and everything, so that's a very good job. And Mr. Adams and Mrs. Adams, very good job with the teams, and all the administrators, a very good job with pulling this together. It was a lot of hard work, all the administrators, supervisors, everyone who is here in this room, thank you so much for your incredible efforts. Really means a lot, and this is investment in time, investment of time for the district, for the future, and the kids will remember this, and they will bless you all for that. Thank you.
We didn't, we forgot somebody.
Yes, Mr. Romano, go ahead.
I believe the website launch.
We are going through that.
So, we do have, we do have one more presentation current?
Do you have a period of time that we can cooperate?
How, it's a, right? About 10 minutes. About 10 minutes, and I know the administrators are, if you would endure 10 more minutes, and...
... integral parts of making this happen.
It's actually the fruit of their work and yours as well, too. Absolutely. And I'm going to allow them to come in nine minutes late tomorrow, so it can be an 8:09, an 8:09 start.
All right. So, we are going to make sure our sound is on, yes? Mr. McDonald? Okay. Just bring up the site. And here we are. So, I'm actually thrilled to share that tomorrow, and I'm going to say the date. Wednesday, August 21st, at 4:00 p.m., we are launching our new district website. Not only are we launching our new district website, we are launching 20 school websites. And this truly marks a moment, I think I'm getting feedback. Am I getting feedback? Can you guys hear me okay? I'm okay? This marks a truly important step in moving the district forward in terms of communicating with our community, communicating with our staff, our students, and our parents. It's truly an anchor, from what I'm hearing throughout the strategic planning process, to moving us forward to meet each of those five pillars. So, I'm excited to be giving you a sneak peek tonight, prior to the 4 o'clock turnover tomorrow. The culmination of this process really is due to a year of listening, analyzing, and developing. A comprehensive, intuitive, growing website cannot be created overnight. It is grounded in stakeholder feedback. We received feedback from PTO organizations. We had parent feedback forms on all of our newsletters. We had a feedback forum on our old website. I've also spoken with all the administrative teams in each of the buildings, getting individual feedback from the buildings. feedback from the buildings. And based on that feedback, there were many pain points. The primary pain points were the lack of account, integrated calendar system, a lack of a streamlined navigation system, lack of ADA and language accessibility, and a lack of consistency throughout the district. So this new design takes in all of those pieces, and really has truly been designed from the ground up. You can approach a website redesign project in two waves. One of which is a full content migration from the old site over to the new site. The second of which is building from the ground up. We took the ground-up approach because our old site had so much extraneous old information, so we really took a look and sifted through the information to make sure that this new website will become an anchor of truth for our community, an anchor of facts for our community, and a place that they can go first to find their information. So now we're going to get a sneak peek to our website, and let me scroll a little bit. Let's see, okay. So given those points, the I want to features, parents, based on analytics and their feedback, had specific areas they want to be able to access with kind of a one-click. Food services, tutoring, transportation, enrolling their child, curriculum, the district calendar, and an enhanced search feature. This enhanced search feature allows us to not only search our site, but search segments of the site, and you can search different sites. So for example, you can search just the district site, you can search each school site, so it does give you a filtering option. In addition to the search feature, in ten days, we are going to be implementing or integrating an AI chatbot, which will take about ten days to index once we go live. That chatbot is customized to our district website, as well as each of our building websites. So when a user logs on to our website, they will be greeted with a chat, a cute little chatbot, that I'm still trying to make cute, and you'll be asked, just like in a commercial organization, you know, what can I help you with today? And that chatbot will respond. So not only do we have our search features, and I'm going to show you about, a little bit about the navigation, excuse me, in a moment, but it's going to be truly interactive and call information for parents. The translation feature, if you look at, excuse me, all of the languages that are offered through translation, you can pick all of these languages, and parents have access to that translation feature right here. Here's our global icons, excuse me, I'm going to take a sip of water. These global icons link to different areas of the website. District news and events will be listed here, rather than our pop-ups. We have a live feed that I'm going to describe to you in a moment. We have some facts, figures, kind of telling our Edison Township Public Schools story. We have ETPS and Action, which will highlight videos throughout the district. A high-requested element is our district events. Every school now has a dedicated Google Calendar that I created for every building across the district. The buildings enter their events into their individual school calendars, and those events feed into the district calendar. So the district events and the school events are listed here. You can click on a school here and specify the schools that you would like to see the events for, and you can see that our amazing administrative and supervisory staff has already begun entering in events. Go right back here. Bear with me, there we go. And we do have an app, so I'm going to play the app for you in a moment, or play a video that is on every school webpage. I'm going to go to one school webpage, and I'm going to describe the school's webpage, as I think I'll go to JMI. So if you notice, for each school webpage, as you navigate through each school, there is a now common navigation structure, another request from families. Every school has the Our School Student Life Programs and Services, Families and Communities, and Employee Resources structure. Every school has the same global icons, so a parent moving from one school to the next has consistency in their navigation experience. They also have their news and their live feed, and again, videos that will be able to populate, as well as their individualized school calendar. Every administrator and supervisor in the district will, and, and district administration has access to the live feed. Every administrator, teacher, I'm sorry, supervisor, and central office administrator has the app on their phone. If we're in a classroom, or we're in a building, and we see something amazing going on, we can take a picture through the app, immediate, immediately feed it to the live feed, which is an internal social media portal that is one-way communication. So it's a way for our district to tell, to tell our story. The news feed here, schools can post their own news, districts, the district can post down to the schools. And I will give you a preview into the app. I know we're all tired, so I think I'll go right from here and see...
Introducing the brand-new app for Edison Public Schools on Android and iPhone. It's everything Edison Township Public Schools in your pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the three horizontal lines in the bottom-left to see all of the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap Settings, and select Notification Preferences. Tap Subscriptions to subscribe to your school. The Events section shows a list of events throughout the school. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar, or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The Feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school, whether that's celebrating a student's success, or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Edison Township Public Schools in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything Edison Township Public Schools in your pocket.
I have to say that I probably recorded that thirty times, so that I could get the right recording. My husband, at one point, wanted to leave my house, or asked me to go someplace else. It's so hard to do that, right, to hear your own voice. So that app is downloadable for our families. It'll start to be promoted tomorrow on social media, and they can scan a QR code, and once they download the app, they'll be able to customize that, customize that app specific to the schools that their, their children attend, and really streamline the information that they're receiving. I do want to say, though, that an effect in a, in a dynamic website is not stagnant, and this is only the beginning. So when we, we design a website, it doesn't stop today. It's actually a beginning. Part of the process was training all of the administrative teams, and I'm, I'm going to be at your supervisory meeting next week, to not only use the website, but to really garner their expertise in the content. Because if we have a collaborative voice in creating the content for this website, we truly are able to represent and brand Edison as the great district that we are, and start to really tell our story through our website. I thank you all for your support in this journey. I thank all of our administrative teams and our community members who participated in feedback, and I really look forward to then, this next step on our journey of creating some anchoring communication tools that we can use to start to brand Edison Township Public Schools as the amazing school district that we are. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a cake, Heather, for cake-cutting ceremony for the website?
Yes, sure, right? Why not?
All right, thank you so much. Any board members want to comment on the website?
I, we'd just like to thank everybody. This was a, this is a monumental task, and it's nothing but going forward. We are going to go and get better at this. We're going to do tremendous things. Communication between you, the parents, and the schools, and the administrative team here, that's the goal. The goal is to make things better, to make things run smooth. In other words, our job is to see that it runs well. That's the Board of Ed. The administrative staff, that's what they're doing right here. See, that's what Heather's doing, working with Ed and with, with all of the other administrators, our principals, our assistant principals. That's what, that's what they do. They do a job, they do a real good job. We just sit here and watch in, in amazement at what they do. So Heather, nice job, see you tomorrow morning, eight o'clock.
Yes. Yep, James Monroe, presenting at nine to New Teacher Institute Communications.
Thank you. All right, so thank you so much, everyone, for being here, and we'll see you soon at the convocation.
Great. Thank you so much to all the administrative tasks and in attendance tonight.
All right, at this point, we'll begin our meeting. Public comments on resolutions only. Any public comments on resolutions only? Saying none, motion to end public comments, or your resolution, Jerry?
Yes, go ahead.
Shannon?
This is about some of the policies. I see the policy thirty-three twenty-four on the agenda, but we also, the district, have fifty-five sixteen. So to me, thirty-three twenty-four about not allowing videotaping, recording, is actually contradicting with policy fifty-five sixteen. Fifty-five sixteen stated that during school hours, cellphone use is not allowed. So if we enforce fifty-five sixteen, we don't need thirty-three twenty-four. Okay, so go read it. And through the chair to the Policy Committee Chair, Brian Rivera. This is about the bylaw one-four-three dot two. This is about the high school representatives attending school board meetings.
Is it in the resolutions?
It is in the resolutions. One forty-three dot two, bylaw. So why are we changing that bylaw? It says, if you have more than one high school, you shall rotate the representative. Why are we doing that? We only have two high schools. It's been working well for the past two years. They're coming, bringing their, you know, thoughts. I don't know why we're changing that. And also, for, I thought there were so many of them, I didn't have time to read all of them. And the other one's bylaw one-five-one. This is about type-two school district. It doesn't even apply to us, so why it's on the, on the agenda?
I didn't hear that last...
All right, thank you. So that's one of Ms. Rivera...
I didn't hear your last comment.
It's type, for, for type-two school district. We're not type-two school district. Why we're adopting that, that bylaw?
Okay, so anything else, Mr. Shi?
The other is just, just a comment. The bylaw zero-one-six-three, it is stated about quorum, and especially towards the end of the, the bylaw, it clearly stated, people who has conflicts, you know, school board member who have conflicts should not be discussing issues that they have conflict with. But we all know that we have conflict board members, you know, policy chair, you know, that they are discussing things they're not, they have conflict with. So I hope that, you know, you guys passing this policy, passing by these laws, in reason, and abide by these policies and bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Adorelli, you want to answer any of those?
Yes, so, so these are, are strike-throughs in relationship to that, so again, this is the, the first read of these particular pieces, right? So the, the practice for the Board of having two on there is, is definitely something that's going to be kept in place. So there, they are strike-throughs in there, the Board has access to this, and not only in the executive content as well.
Thank you. Any more public comments on resolutions only? Saying none, motion to close public comments or resolutions?
Motion, second.
Mr. Romano, Mr. Schneider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, at this point, we will move to motion to approve personal report. Anyone motion to approve personal report?
Motion.
Mr. Schneider?
Second.
Second, Mr. Romano? Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this point, I will give it to Dr. Adorelli for some comments.
Yeah, I would just like to acknowledge that we hired two new members of the administrative team currently right now. Our Benjamin Franklin Vice Principal, if you wouldn't mind standing, Mr. Daniel Banzo, and Language Arts, English Language Arts Supervisor over for our high school programs, Ms. Michelle Curcio. Congratulations. Looking forward to two wonderful additions to, to our administrative team. I know it's a little late, so if, if you'd like to be excused right now and go home and celebrate, by all means, you go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve administration, curriculum, and instruction pupil services reports. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Lugo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve administration, curriculum, instruction, oh, sorry, motion to approve finance reports. May I have a motion to approve finance reports?
Motion.
Mr. Schneider? Mr. Romano? Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Okay. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is our committee reports. First one is Edison Preschool and Special Ed Committee. Who is reading the report?
I can read it.
Okay.
All right, perfect. So the committee met on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at four PM, in attendance were Mr. Romano, Mr. Rivera, Ms. Daniel, myself, and Dr. Tuie. Based on this report, we talked about preschool expansion aid. It's fully on track for full-day program for roughly six hundred students, ages three and four, beginning in the fall. The district's application was reviewed by the Nation, the National Institute for Early Childhood Education, out of Rutgers in July, was submitted to the Department of Education on Monday, August twelfth. Students have been selected, and the families have been notified of those locations. Transportation is currently working on routes, and this will be available in Genesis shortly, and that will be discussed in our upcoming transportation report as well. Our Edison Success Academy, all construction projects are either completed or on track for a September opening. Staff planning to move into the buildings on eight-twenty-six, and they will be planning the openings of the doors to the students on the first day of school. I'd be remiss if I did not compliment Dr. Tuie. These are two large initiatives. Him and his team have done a wonderful job moving them forward. It's my understanding that this is one of the largest, if not the largest, preschool grant application that the Board of Education, or that the state has ever seen, so extremely impressive, and I believe exactly what the state's looking for. So congratulations, yeah, that's a monumental task.
Next is Mr. Rivera, Policy Committee.
Good evening, everybody. So we had a policy meeting on a couple, I'm sorry, a couple of days ago. Attendees were myself, Chris, Anjuna, Dr. Adorelli, Dr. Tuie, and Heather Daniel. So the Policy Committee met and reviewed Alert Two Thirty-Three from Strauss Esme. The committee discussed mandated and revised policies as per the June two thousand twenty-four alert, and made choices from the options provided within the policies pertaining the policy zero-one-four-one. Number of the board members and term served, and the types of physical evaluations needed for all new certified and non-certified staff. Further, the committee reviewed the guidance provided by the attorneys in relation to policy fifty-seven fifty-six. Additional policies reflected on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four board agenda are from March two thousand twenty-four audit conducted by Strauss Esme. Further meetings will address the remaining policies that need to be updated from the audit. audit. I don't know if everybody remembered, but we had tons of policies that needed to be updated. I believe it was a couple of hundred. So we're working on these diligently. The committee also discussed policies related to vendors and board member interactions for future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Schneider?
Yes, thank you, President Patel. On Thursday, August first, we did a Buildings and Grounds meeting. It was an all-day meeting. We basically spent the school day together. We met at the Ed Center at nine o'clock. It was myself, Joe Romano, and Anjana Patel. We were joined by members of the administration, and we had a great day. We started off with a meeting in the Ed Center, and we talked about all of the updates and looked at pictures of everything that's happening. We looked at all of the data and timelines of when things are going to be finished. The good news is, by September, a lot of stuff that seems to be in disarray today, on August twentieth, will still, you know, while it looks like it's not going to be done, it will be done. So some examples of that, we have bathroom upgrade, upgrades throughout the district. Mr. Colubus is leading an effort to renovate a ton of bathrooms. Just to be clear on that, that's five bathrooms at Herbert Hoover Middle School, four bathrooms at Ben Franklin, four bathrooms at E H S, four bathrooms at Woodrow Wilson, two bathrooms at Lincoln, four bathrooms at M L K, and two bathrooms at J M P. In addition, that was all this summer, in the last month or two. In addition, we looked at the status of the future projects, not even what started yet, but the things we've started on paper. Those included three major, major projects, J M I being one. J M I is already funded. U S A Architects is the lead architect on that, and that should be ready for a bid package in December. John Marshall, which is a, if, I don't know if those plans are out there yet, but the plans are just spectacular. The project's with the New Jersey Department of Education for review right now, and it's being reviewed by, for a five-year ground lease by Acacia Financial. And lastly, was the Edison High School project. We have been, you know, the previous board and this board is working hard to, to renovate this building that we're in right now, and there's a number of different choices we could make, but in, in a nutshell, our very aggressive initiative is to get that done. We still have to think about financing for that and figure out how we're going to do it. It's not like the money grows on trees, but at the same time, I think that, you know, the, the students here deserve it. We also have all the projects. So the most exciting part, after we talked, we actually went to, we got into a couple of S U Vs and drove around. And we started by going to all four middle schools. We went to T J, Hoover, Woodrow, and John Adams. And all of the projects and all of the renovations going on there should be completed by September. I don't think that has changed, right, Mr. Colubus? I think we're good for September. The major wow factor at all of these buildings is obviously the gymnasiums slash auditoriums that, we have stages in a few of them. It's just the technology and the, the, the grand nature of these structures is just, it was really incredible to see. It was actually emotional. We started these projects in two thousand twenty-two. If anybody's really bored one day, go on YouTube, you could watch the Phase One. It was Dr. Bregan introducing the Phase One projects, and we had a committee, the whole meeting. And so it's like April or March of twenty-two was when we initiated the conversations, and we're cutting ribbons in September, right? So that gives everybody a timeline as to how long it takes to get things approved, to go through the entirety of the process, and obviously, end on something that ultimately is great for our students, right? The, the, the projects, the one project, if you, if you're familiar with Thomas Jefferson, you'll see that that, in addition to, and all the, all the buildings have a little bit different in terms of bells and whistles, but Thomas Jefferson, if you've ever been in the breezeway there, now the breezeway is super-duper wide. It's got a hallway that leads to the new gym, and it's got a proper security vestibule, and it's just a really safe way for the students and the staff to enter the building. Previously, our security officer was sitting in the hallway on a little desk. It was dilapidated, and for a building built, and I think it was in the nineteen-fifties or something. So it's just so wonderful to see how modern the building's going to look in the entryway. And when those students enter the classrooms in September, they're just going to feel good about what they're walking into. It's going to be spectacular. We then went to J P Stevens. Now, the J P Stevens project was also started with discussions in twenty-two, but that's a bigger project. If, to remind everybody, it's like twenty-eight classrooms, it's, it's, the auditorium's getting totally redone. There's just a lot going on there. So it takes a little bit longer, but the progress has been significant. Interiors, some, some cool things like just new ceilings and, and new L E D lighting, but like, the big thing is, you see the steel structure that's up, and you really see the, the, the vastness of it and how impactful it will be for the students. You can only imagine that, you know, when we're talking about the strategic vision, the biggest impact we as a board could have on that vision is infrastructure, right? So all of these efforts are now paying dividends, and that steel structure gives you an idea of what kind of impact it'll have. Big problem there was the auditorium and the stage. So imagine ripping that entire, you know, auditorium apart essentially, and converting a, an, an old stage that used to have a lot of flooding issues. They did a whole French drain outside, they dug down, they did all the waterproofing that you'd see at, almost like a house, but like, way deeper and way more significant. And then on the inside, the stage is now concrete. So the technology is going to be similar to this, the beauty is going to be similar to this, but like, the stuff that nobody really, you know, might see is the real important things, like the, the, the French drain and the concrete of the stage, and the way that you're able to really protect it from future issues with the water. Because everybody knows, if you've been around J P Stevens, the water table's a little funky over there. Oh, another note I have here is the T J cafeteria. Because we put a stage in the new multipurpose room, which is the gym, we also then ripped out the stage from the old one, and what that enables us to do is add another fifty or sixty or seventy chairs for the cafeteria. So the students will just have more room to eat lunch, and it'll be more comfortable for them. We talked a lot about air conditioning, we talked a lot about, a lot of stuff. I mean, we had lunch together, we had a great day together, we took a ton of pictures. I think it was really positive. I think everybody that was there would agree, and I think that everybody should really look forward. If you haven't been to the buildings, when you walk in, if you walk into any of these buildings, you're going to be wowed. Lastly, the Edison Success Academy, it was touched on here. That's a building that's been in our possession for quite some time. It's now being used for this purpose, and it is, you know, really spectacular in terms of the, the, the use, and also the way it feels when you walk in, and that openness. If you haven't been there, if you ever get a chance to go, it's got like this really cool room when you walk in. It's a repurposed, our Savior's Church. So they used a lot of the architecture there to make it look and feel cool. It's going to be a very inviting space for the students that are there, and a great, great way to utilize real estate that we had. So, and that also will be available for you since September. So I know that was a long report, but it's really important stuff, and I thank you for, for the time, Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. So I have a question for Mr. Toth. When is the ribbon cutting, so board members can mark their calendars for each of this gym openings?
Yeah, we're going to set that up for September.
Awesome. Very good. Look forward to that. Right? Next is Township Liaison, Mrs. White.
Okay, here we go. The Township B O E Liaison Committee was held on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at the Education Center. The meeting began at eleven A M. and ended at twelve noon. In attendance in person were Mayor's Chief of Staff, Bob Deal, Community, Community Constituent Relations Coordinator, Pat Coyle, Councilman John Pointer, Lieutenant Doug Turner, Superintendent, Dr. Alderelli, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Huss, Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, Dr. Tuie, Director of Security, Pat Cassane, B O E, B O E Vice President, Joe Romano, and B O E members, Brian Rivera and Virginia White. Deputy Chief of Police, Bob Dudesch, and B O E Member, Anjana Patel, attended via Zoom. We began our meeting with Deputy Chief Dudesch, who provided the following updates. Pedestrian activated crossing signs were moving forward steadily, and they're appearing all over, I mean, you can see them at different schools. The J M, the J M's traffic study is ongoing. The Junior Police Academy was very successful this summer. Possible collaboration with the Police Health Department and B O E for the Hidden in Plain Sight Program. This is something new that's coming up. The National Night Out was canceled due to weather, and the Police Unity Tour in Edison Ride, the Edison Ride took place. Lieutenant Turner thanked everyone who assisted in the Unity Tour. The Unity Tour is just getting started, and we're hoping to continue to move forward with this project. Dr. Alderelli mentioned the B O E convocation scheduled for September fourth at the Expo Center. He cited traffic concerns and alerted Chief Dudesch, who said they would be addressed. Chief of Staff, Bob Deal, provided the following township updates. The Battle of Short Hills Dedication was very successful. Thank you to the J P Stevens Band, Band Director, John Zizali, and Choir Director, Matthew Lee, for providing the music and national anthem for the event. The new Splash Park is open and very successful. The Township Bond and Budget Passed, and the Township Master Plan was adopted at the July Council Meeting. Councilman John Pointer asked questions about the plan regarding maintenance of the cricket pitches, and the B O E will coordinate with the township to address these issues. Pat Coyle stated that the Mayor's Second Boot Camp for Edison students begins on August twelfth. This is an opportunity to promote available opportunities for students looking for leadership and internship programs offered by Edison Township. The next liaison meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October the eighth, respectfully submitted, Virginia White, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Lugo, Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Board President. The Transportation Committee met on Monday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, in the Education Center. Their meeting started at four-thirty. In attendance was myself, Ms. Virginia White, Mr. Doug Gien, Mr. John Toth, Dr. Huss, and Dr. Alderelli. The Transportation Supervisor has informed the committee of the following as it relates to subscription busing. So far this year, there have been two hun, two thousand eight hundred and forty-four students placed on buses, with new enrollees are being addressed. Information regarding acceptance and payments for subscription busing has been provided for those who are interested. Advanced payment is necessary in order to secure subscription busing. Also, the subscription portal is set to reopen for those who are interested, October first, and will close on October fifteenth. There'll also be a meeting held for bus drivers and aides on Thursday, August twenty-second, where attendees will complete required training and related, training related to safety and other job-related procedures. To date, the district has forty-five drivers and sixteen, sixteen aides. Mr. Gien has informed the committee that the bus passes will be available on Friday, August twenty-third, and they'll be, be able to be viewed in the parent portal on Genesis. Mr. Gien has also updated the committee on the following software and tracking updates. Stop Finder. Invitations will go out to parents of students on board vehicles prior to school starting. For the Trip Finder, logins have been sent to principals and their delegates to enter class trips, sporting events, and other student-related trips. And finally, Wave Finder, the Wave Fighter training has started, and fifteen drivers to date have participated. Our meeting concluded at roughly five fifteen P M. An additional meeting will be set up in the month of September to debrief after the opening of school. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Yes, Mr. Alderelli.
And just as an additional update to that, I did speak with Mr. Gien, our Transportation Supervisor, today in relationship to the waitlist that we had talked about during transportation currently right now. He informed me that there are currently only seven individuals, seven students that are on the waitlist right now that have requested. So those, those families that requested subscription busing, that have had the opportunity to get that, there's seven students on the waitlist currently.
That's awesome. Looking forward for a better year. Thank you. Food and Nutrition Committee. Mr. Romano? Who's going to read the Food and Nutrition Committee?
I have no comment.
Okay. All right. So now we'll open up for public comments. Mr. Rodeven, read that.
Read it, okay. All right. Now comes the section of the meeting for public comment. It's mandated by the Board policies. Please come into the microphone and provide your name and address for the record. You will be permitted six minutes to address the Board. When speaking, please address all comments to the Chair. The Board will not permit any profane, defamatory, or political commentary. As a reminder, please use your time wisely. Public comment is not intended to be a question-and-answer period. In the, it is the time for the meeting where the publicly speak on any topic associated with the business of this Board. The superintendent with this new website is going to be, if it's appropriate, answering questions, so the entire public, not just the members of the, of the public that are here presently or watching it on the screen, there might be information that anybody in the public would like. So he's going to provide answers on a timely basis on the website for the citizens. So please, again, time for you to address the Board, not for the Board to have debate back and forth.
Thank you. So before we open up the public comments quickly, any, any board member comments, if any?
Board President?
Mr. Schneider, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Ms. Daniel, Ms. Heather Daniel, the website presentation you made was really, really special. It was great. As a parent, I can't wait to use it. The calendar aspect of it is really exciting. I think it's going to be great to just click on it and put it on my phone. And I, I want to commend you for that, because I know that, I, I can't imagine to onboard all of the schools and the content and everything, how much that must have, how much effort that would have taken. The other thing is the strategic plan that was presented tonight. I didn't comment, I did not comment on it before, but I want to now. It's a huge, huge thing for this district. We haven't done one since two thousand twelve. People might think it's a waste of time, but anytime you run any kind of big organization, it's important to have some sort of mission and some sort of goal. So this way, when we get off mission, which sometimes we do, we can point back to it and say, is this, is this really what we're here for? And I think that it really encapsulated everything that this township, not just the school district, but everything that we stand for in Edison. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Alderelli for, for spearheading that. It, there's a reason it hasn't happened in a while, and there's a reason it happened this year, so thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Rivera?
I also want to echo on, on your, on Doug's sentiments, but I also wanted to wish, congratulate the Muldowney family for the retirement of their number. If anybody knew Mr. Muldowney, they would know he had a good heart, he was a good person, and just his entire family. His daughter taught my child, so I appreciate his, her effort with my child as well, but I really wanted to congratulate the family on that honor. And I also wanted to wish all the, the staff, our students, the families, you know, school year's about to start, so I hope everybody has a successful school year, and a happy one, a healthy one, and I wish you all the best in September.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Ms. White.
Okay. As you can tell, everybody has been working very, very hard over this summer. Between strategic planning, our Transportation Department has been doing amazing things, and, you know, the proof is in the pudding, and we're going to see that during that first week of school. To the staff and everybody, and all of our students, I wish you well. It's going to be a great year, I just know it, and congratulations, Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you.
You're the best.
Thank you.
All right. So public comments, I know Mr. Mara is here, so let him go first.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Five Cladocourt in Edison, Anthony Mara. Before I start, I'm here on Policy Fifty-Seven-Fifty-Six, as I always have been. I want to make a comment about what I say. I, I've spoken rather sternly on Policy Fifty-Seven-Fifty-Six. I, I want to make it clear to the Board, my comments are about the policy, not about the board members. I admire you guys. You guys have a hard job. I hope you don't take this the wrong way. I love you guys. I saw how hard your work is, especially the last meeting at James Madison School, oh my gosh. You, you guys have a hard job. I see that. So please understand, my comments are not about you, it's the policy. The policy is evil. That, that much having been said, let me get down to business. I've spoken before about a rule that God gave us. It's called the Golden Rule. We all know it is.[1788.71] We all know it is. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. You can't argue with that policy. It's a fundamental rule of living. Policy 5756 is contrary to that rule. Is there any parent on this planet who would want to be, who would say, yeah, my son and daughter, my son and daughter is getting, is going to change gender, don't tell me. You at the school, keep me in the dark. There's a parent around who would say that. We all want to know what's going on with our children. If you say that as a parent, keep me in the loop, don't keep me in the dark, why are you doing it to the parents of this township? Policy 5756 says, don't tell them. We know here in Edison that a student is going to do something that changes gender, keep that parent in the dark. That is wrong. That is wrong, you should be ashamed of yourself, abolish 5756 now, wipe it out. The Golden Rule is fundamental to living. It's, it's, it's found there as a building box, just as gender is. You mess with the Golden Rule, you're going to have problems with your life. Everyone likes to work with someone who, who treats you the way you want to be treated. Mess with gender, it's the same thing. That's why the suicide rate amongst transgenders is so high. It has nothing to do with prejudice, as those who would claim it is. It has to do with, you're messing with fundamental building box. That same God who gave us the Golden Rule also said, have you not read that he created them from the beginning, made them male and female? Male and female, that's it. There are two genders. You mess with that, you mess with the fundamental building box of human race, and that's why the suicide rate is so high. People who try to change gender, they can't handle it. That same God also gave us honor your father and your mother, honor mom and dad. You're a parent, you can't argue with that. Policy 5756 dishonors mom and dad by keeping him in the dark. Again, there isn't a parent around who doesn't want to know something like that about his children, but you're keeping him in the dark. Shame on you. Abolish 5756 now. But 5756 goes further. It says that the transgender student can compete with those of the gender with which he identifies, generally men competing with women. You know, the transgender community, LGBT community is all about equality. They, they, they march to that tune. Well, that's not equality, that's superiority. You are persecuting, you are, you are, you are treating these girls very unfairly. Stop it, stop it now. But it goes further. It says that these transgender students can share the restrooms with, with those of the, the gender with which they identify, generally guys going into ladies room. But that is unthinkable. That is absolutely unthinkable. Do you want your mom or daughter in there? Is that what you want? You're persecuting the girls. You're persecuting them. Shame on you. Abolish it, abolish it now. If you don't abolish it now, you think you're going to do it in the future, when even more is demanded by the LGBT community? If you cannot lift a 10-pound weight, how are you going to lift a 50-pound weight? If you cannot run a mile, how are you going to run 10 miles? If you can't abolish it now, when it's relatively easy, how are you going to do it when more demands are made of you? You think this is the end of it? You think 5756 is the end of it? It's the beginning. More will be demanded of you. If you don't have the backbone to abolish it now, you're not going to have it in the future. Abolish 5756 now, while you have the chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, Beth, you can go ahead.
Good evening. Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. First of all, congratulations, Dr. Alderelli. You finished all that work that we worked on and great presentation tonight and great hard work, Ms. Daniels. You did a good job. It looks like it's going to be great. Appreciate it. Couple of questions. Number one, with all of the building, I brought this up before, that's been going on, there was somewhat of a discussion about having a foreman who could be on site checking progress and construction as it's going on. Has anything happened with that, moved forward on that? Because with everything going on, to the extent that it is, the magnitude of the jobs, it would be beneficial, especially if work's being done on weekends and so forth, so somebody could be overseeing it. Also, I'd like to bring up once again our calendar, which I brought up last spring, Beryl, about being that we are such a diverse community, to be inclusive of all holidays and all religions. We should have all of them on here or none of them. And I've yet to see a revision to add in some of our Christian holidays, like Christmas rather than saying winter break, and Easter rather than just saying spring break. It's not funny. I don't think we should be laughing about it. There was, you know, we've had issues about divisiveness in our schools and we should be inclusive of all and include it all, being that we're diverse, and teach everybody and educate everybody about all of them, or not have any of them listed, being that we're getting a new calendar updated, maybe we can revise it while doing that. Lastly, I'd like to bring up, I see we have a new attorney sitting up on the dais from, I think, a different law firm. I didn't see anything like voted on tonight or why that change was done to us as a public to see what's going on, and also mid-meeting to hear that there's going to be a change, that the public's comments will not be answered directly at the meeting, rather than Dr. Alderelli will get to them when he can. And I know he's a very busy man, and sometimes if it's a quick answer that could be done at the meeting while we're here, to the attorney, these are meetings that are televised live and on our website, so the people can very well hear the answers there and hear them live, rather than waiting till a very busy gentleman like Dr. Alderelli has time to respond to them. That's it, but I'm sure you're not going to say anything or respond to it, but just please think about it. And kind of, you know, President, if you can tell us why we have a new attorney sitting up there, because usually in the past, I don't know, I've been at meetings for many years, when we've had a change of an attorney in different firms, it's been voted on and said something to the public about it. Thank you.
So I hope you can be a little optimistic, Beth, because this is not a new attorney. He was voted upon earlier in June, and he was, he weathered the storm at James Monroe with a whole bunch of people. That was his first meeting, and he was with us at James Monroe. This is his second meeting. In terms of website and the questions and everything, we always want to try something new, right? It's not stopping anyone for answering or speaking, that's not the idea here. We can look into it as we go, but the whole purpose is Heather is putting together a wonderful website and will try something new where they can really answer questions. Now, one of the thought process behind this is the parents can see what others are asking, who could not make it to the meetings, and they can see the responses in certain cases. But some question like yours about if Mr. Toth has answered, he can answer right now about that infrastructure, whatever it was.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Don't mean to be back and forth, but it should have been stated at the beginning of the meeting, prior to it, voted on. I'm not sure if the rest of the Board of Ed members knew that the thing was changing, but you should let us know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. I'd like to start by congratulating Dr. Alderelli. He's come a long way. He was appointed as a HR person, and he showed us his strengths. And then he was taken upon to be an acting superintendent. And after a number of months, he proved himself to the powers that be, where he was elected to be the superintendent. Now, his stipend, I recall, when he became acting was not to my liking, but he grabbed it, but he proved to everyone that what he was doing was a good job. What I'd like to speak about is his ability to be a visionary and be able to prove to everyone else in the district that if they prove themselves as being good workers, good leaders, that they too will get the recognition that they need. And having all the principals here tonight was a great way to prove that he feels confident with the people that he hires, and that in the same time, the principals that we have here feel confident with the people that they hire, that they feel confident that their workers have proven themselves also. So kudos to you for showing the right way of doing things, and I just would hope that everyone else would follow in that vernacular and show their employees that yes, you have proven your worth to us, and we are thankful for that, and we will proceed in appreciating ourselves. Are you doing that on purpose? My time is not up. Well, I can talk loud enough, I was a teacher. So I wish to have everyone know that this is what, one of the things that Dr. Alderelli, as a visionary, would hope for all of his administration, and his administration would hope for all those employees. The only other thing I'd like to talk about, two other things. The first thing is, I don't know why, but people in my neighborhood come to ask me for the answers, and the only thing I can say is, I'll ask at the next meeting. If you notice at many of the television programs lately, the news, talking about the different districts, and they're looking to ban the use of cell phones in the schools. They're not allowing them to be used during the day, and they wanted to know what our district feels about not allowing cell phones in the schools during the day. And I, my response was, it's not my school district, but I will ask. So I don't know whether any conversation has taken place about it yet, or if it ever will, but people have been talking about pros and cons regarding cell phones. So I wanted to just put that out. And my last thing is, I applaud everything that took place, and Heather is unbelievable, and the Adams have been working hard for many months. The only question or problem that I have is your agenda. And Heather has promised me that she will make accommodations. As a special ed teacher through my years, I made accommodations for my students. I would like the board to make accommodations for the people that are pulling their hair out with your current agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, miss? Sorry for, apologies for the technical issues with the mic.
Hi. My name is Cindy Ma, and I live in Edison, South Edison. Okay. The speakers are beeping. Oh, okay.
You may want to come in a little bit in the front. Speakers are down, you can come in the front.
Yeah, the speakers are down.
Audio is being recorded and is online.
Okay.
Hello? Oh, good. Okay, back on. That was, that's good, thank God. Okay. I have to say my name again. My name is Cindy Ma, I live in South Edison. I come before you again to speak against Policy 5756. I sent you, I sent you all an email about Elon, Elon Musk in an interview with Wire Podcast. He said he was tricked into signing papers for his son to have a sex change. Even the richest man in the world was deceived, because now he regrets that decision and is dealing with the pain of that decision. He said to his son, he said that his son is now dead, meaning his son's name and body now is a female. He was told that his son would commit suicide if he did not allow his surgical, surgical procedure. Now, isn't, it's, don't you know that it's emotional blackmail when someone says to us, if you do not allow me to do things my way, I will commit suicide? It's totally manipulative. What if our children don't want to go to school? Well, we make them go, we give them boundaries for their good. We love them enough to say no, to protect them from harming themselves. The school policy 5756 will bar parents from guiding their child's confusion of their sexual identity. There are physical and spiritual laws that if we break, there are consequences. For example, the physical law of gravity, if we jump off, you know, like a building or a tall tree, we will fall and get hurt. When we go against God, when we go against the God-designed and ordained order of sex, if we break those laws, we will suffer the horrible emotional outcome of those decisions like Elon Musk and his son. Lies are destructive and will not outlast truth. Truth and, and facts do matter, because so much data have come out to refute this transgender ideology. This new information just came out, the American Society of Plastic Surgeons, an organization representing 92% of all board-certified plastic surgeons in the US, has become the first major medical association to break from the consequences over gender-affending care for minors. Now, this along with UK hospitals doing gender surgeries that have been closed due to lawsuits, as well as the testimonies of detransitioners who are suffering, who have, who are suffering from irreversible changes, damages, and medical side effects of their decisions made when they did not know any better. They are now questioning, why did adults in their lives do not stop them? This policy 5756 from the government is taking away our parents' constitutional rights to be parents to our children. Our children do not belong to the state. The only place where children belong to the government is in the communist countries like China or North Korea. In the communist countries, they do not allow any dissenting opinion. That is what is happening to us in the political realm. In some places in New Jersey, people who speak up against the LGBTs getting death threats. It is viewpoint discrimination, and I repeat, viewpoint discrimination, when only one side is heard and policies are based on that one side only. It is viewpoint discrimination. We followers of Christ want to speak the truth in love. Love without truth is flattery. We care about the pain and harm that results from deceptions and making wrong decisions. Truth cannot be suppressed, it cannot be hidden, it transcends and transforms. Truth sets free, heals and redeems. Dear Board Ed Members, may God bless you and keep you, and may God give you the grace and wisdom and strength to do what is right and honoring to God, because we will all answer to Him one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Gerald Maglio. I'm from the Dolores Turco Foundation. I've spoken before. I just do want to say that I'm very impressed, I've been before dozens of boards, and this is a very impressive one. Your students are articulate, also impressive, so, but I am speaking today regarding 5756, and I thank you for your decision to critically review this policy, and I'd like to address some of the concerns regarding lawsuits that came up at the last meeting. To begin with, Morris County Court has determined that this policy is not mandatory. School boards statewide adopted it because of the misrepresentation that it was and are now seeking to repeal it. According to Hanover, the Board of Education, the policy is wholly one-sided, fails to provide a mechanism to address and manage conflicting concerns of all students, parents, administrators, staff, and the district as a whole. They recognize, the council, the fact that there is no authority that gives minor children an unfettered right to the exclusion of their, of privacy, to the exclusion of their parents. Conversely, the overwhelming Conversely, the overwhelming binding authority from the Supreme Court to state and federal laws demand that parents be apprised and have access to all information concerning their children. Also, the Hanover attorney pointed out that the, this blatantly exposes the district to liability for potentially withholding and concealing information from parents without a legitimate safety concern for doing so. Next, I wanted to point out the Cedar Grove, the New Jersey Cedar Grove School District. In a recent decision, the Department, U.S. Department of Education, made a formal finding that the school district violated parental rights. The Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, PPRA, it prevents public schools from collecting information about political affiliations, sex behavior, attitudes of individuals with whom the respondents have close family relationships. In other words, the DOJ, US DOE, made it clear that Cedar Grove cannot distribute surveys to students asking parents about gender identity without providing parental opt-out notification. Next, I wanted to point out the focus on the illegality of the Biden administration's mandate expanding Title IX, which prohibits sex discrimination in schools to now include sex orientation and gender identity. This policy would allow, just like 5756, males who identify as females the right to use female restrooms, and also consider refusal of using pronouns as harassment. Well, 20, federal judges in 22 states have issued injunctions to prevent the Biden administration's new regulations from going into effect. One judge, well, I better move on a little bit. Just to point out, all the information is in a letter that I sent you. But I do want to point out that the Supreme Court refused to allow the Biden administration Title IX changes included gender identity or sexual orientation to take effect. 24 states have passed a help, but not harm laws to prevent children from surgically and chemically disfiguring their bodies. I just want to point out something about Doctors Protecting Children Declaration. This is the American College of Pediatricians and other medical organizations. They have affirmed that there are only two sexes, and they recognize the biological, recognizing biological differences between male and female is critical to not only the practice of medicine, but good, sound public policy. They point out that so-called gender transition, social transition harms children, that children, that treating them different from their sex, often by encouraging the use of new names, inaccurate pronouns, clothing, et cetera, is, that this is socially affirming them would progress to more harmful interventions like puberty blockers and sex hormones. And then, in just the last minute, one other thing that they point out that transition affirmation does not prove to be safe or effective long-term. It does not reduce suicides, it does not repair mental health or trauma. Minors cannot truly give informed consent because they have developing brains and their minds change often. They're prone to risk-taking. And, let's see. And then, just one last thing to end with in the last seconds here. I'd like to just end with a quote. First, we overlook evil, then we permit evil, then we legalize evil, then we promote evil, then we celebrate evil, and then we persecute those who still call it evil. Simply behind the transgender policies is an evil agenda that is threatening the very lives, safety, health, and welfare of our children. States and even nations are waking up to these atrocities that mutilate and sterilize children. Those in a position to defend children must have the wisdom to see the deception and the courage to stand up for truth and not be bullied or intimidated into silence, because our kids are worth fighting for. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Shi.
Gerald Shi, Edison. First, you know, so glad to see the five-year plan coming to fruition. Eleven months in the making. Congratulations on getting it done. You know, when you came on board, we set up the direction to do the plan, and it's done. It's a living document, we'll continue to work on it. I hope there are some of the detailed plans that, in there, there's a timeline with when these steps can be, you know, should be done. Otherwise, it's an open-ended document. And the other is, you know, the website. Great new hire last year, and we're seeing the result. You mentioned about the but, the things that sometimes in the old search, some of the old information is still there. So when we move into the new era, if we can expire some of the old ones so they don't come into the search result? Okay, great. All right. One thing, I don't know, the calendar, are they downloadable to the people's phone? Okay, the whole thing, I can download the whole entire, okay. Some questions for the committee chairs. Facility Committee Chair, through the chair to the Facility Committee Chair, Doug Schneider. I didn't hear any updates about the road from Dover to JP Stevens. Can I have an update on that? And also, we have seen the solar panels as being stored on most of the school roofs. Is the solar project completed? And if I recall, they promised they're going to give us some charging stations, at least in the high schools, and I haven't seen them. So where are those charging stations? The JMI timeline, it was mentioned in December. It was supposed to be a bit ready in January. Why is the delay? Is a change in the design of the building? The other question is, when is the Marshall school is going to be a bit ready? Last year, when we gave the marching order for the architects for Marshall and Edison High, it's the same time. But based on the update today, seems Edison High is behind. There's no timeline as to when it's going to be a bit ready. So if we can get a, some information on the, you know, when the bid can be issued. Again, for the Transportation Committee, through the chair to Mr. Lugo. You mentioned the number 2,844, and I assume those are the students who will be on the subscription bus? So my question is, with this year, we have 500 students going to the pre-K program. Most of them are not in the schools. How many routes we have added? And how many of these, you know, students are among the 2,844? Some of the facilities, they are smaller. And if you're looking at a traditional 52-passenger buses, probably will not even make it. So what is a plan for the Transportation Committee, sending these little ones to these kindergarten facilities? I know some of them are out of town. So if we can get some update on that, that'd be great. And you mentioned about the Stop Finder, that's the tracking software. Is that going to be only on the school Edison buses? Or it'll be extended to the contracted buses? So if you can have some clarification on that, that'd be great as well. I hope some questions can be answered because some of the questions came from the parents. And it's much easier to answer them, takes 30 seconds, rather than, you know, wait on the, when it's going to be published on the website. You know, we want to be transparent. You want people to come here, attend the meetings. And when we come here, you don't answer questions, that defeats the purpose. So that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Alderelli, you'll answer the transportation questions.
I mean, the two that we can answer really quickly off the top of my head, I'd have to research a couple more of them. Pre-K busing is mandatory as part of the grant. So any student, whether it's internal, external, all have to be bused as per the federal regulations. Dr. Tuohy is shaking his head, and yes. Tracking software is only on our buses currently, internal.
Our buses, correct. And to add to that, we are, we added approximately 450, or we're busing, I should say, 450 additional more subscription bus students versus the previous year. Should do the math on that. I mean, that's, that's at least nine more buses could be in the ballpark of, you know, 20 or so rounds. Real quick, I'll speak to JMI. We hope to hold, I'm not, sorry, not JMI, Marshall. The Marshall project, we hope to hold a public hearing on a ground lease in September. JMI was pushed back because it needed final approval for the DOE. And due to the nature of that project, our architects have advised that it won't be ready till December. It could come in earlier, but they're earmarking December. Edison High School, we awarded SSP a contract to do the full design for the, obviously, the addition and renovation to the orchestra room. That's from start all the way through closeout. Next steps is identifying financing.
Thank you. Next, Matt.
Matt Revnacki, ETA President. First of all, I'd like to commend the board and congratulate Dr. Alderelli extending the contract a year. He's a great person to work with. You know, as you guys know, I've gone to Annapolis. Trust is always the foundation of anything. We have that with Dr. Alderelli and his staff. And the other thing of a good leader is getting a good supporting cast around them. And I believe somebody mentioned that before. You know, whether it be Jonathan, or Chris Huss, or HR Doug, or the rest of your administrative team, Heather, et cetera. You know, it's refreshing when, you know, you have an issue and you can talk it through, and that's what adults and professionals should do. So congratulations, look forward to continuing working with you for the next five years, hopefully. Okay, a couple of things I just want to mention. Great presentation, so everybody did it tonight. Sometimes I've been coming to these meetings a long time. And some presenters, I'm like, God, if they were a teacher, they'd be fighting for their jobs. Not tonight. I thought the presentations, whether it be the two people that were from the, you know, research firm, I talked to them actually individually while you guys were in closed session, or Heather's presentation, the principals and supervisors, and your administrative team did an excellent job in presentation. In fact, I think people look forward to it at the convocation, hearing, you know, what you have to say about the rollout of it. Next thing, as I alluded to, about our new member orientation. As usual, ETA, and we thank you for having us the first day. We do supply lunches, while I know they say it's the best lunch they get for the week, so we're happy to do that, as always. But it's refreshing to see the young people, the people coming in from other districts, and the enthusiasm and spark in that room. And it really is great. I walked around even afterward, I stayed a while, just to mingle more individually. And you can see the glow in their eyes and, you know, the enthusiasm they have for coming here. So again, I think it's a great job hiring the new people and recruiting some, perhaps, from other districts that are coming here. Next thing I want to mention is the, I know you guys voted on it and appreciated, but I do want to mention the evaluation system being approved by the state. I was part of the original committee on that seven years ago. Seven years ago, I expressed that it's the best committee I've ever sat in in my 36 years here. And seven years later, reconvening the committee, I will stand by that statement. It's wonderful to have six administrators and six educators come together and develop a very effective tool. Quite honestly, better than any tool that's out there from the other evaluation systems. Glad it got passed by the state. I think our staff will be happy also because while it's a great tool, you always look to improve it, and that's what the committee did. So kudos to everyone on the committee, both sides, from the administrative point and from the educator's point. My only sad issue is that, now being the president, I will be no longer on the committee. I will have to appoint two replacements. Ms. Glukowski also has become an administrator, who is also an original member. But that'll definitely be done. So again, I thank you for your support on that and, you know, obviously, voting for the system. The final thing, a couple of things for ETA, I just want to bring up some dates. We know we have three board candidate positions up in November. We will have our annual candidates night. That'll be on September 25th at James Monroe School. Those of you that are running, whether you're here on the board or in the audience, or those that aren't here, if you're listening, you'll be receiving some information from there, from my office, probably over the next week or so, finalizing all the details. Second thing, a couple of the dates. We have our annual trunk-or-treat that will be done on October 20th. I haven't put in a form yet, but we've had it every year at Menlo Park School. And I'm sure Mr. Duggan's always been cooperative as well, that Menlo Park School will hold it. And that'll be at 12:00 noon on October 20th. October 22nd, Ms. Campion said, instead of coming up with you, just address it. Again, every year over the past few years, this is a scholarship fundraiser that goes to the students at JP Stevens and Edison High School. It's the Boskov's Discount Coupon. So for $5, which goes directly to ETA for scholarships, you can save, depending what you buy, 25%. Most clothing items, for example, 15% or 10%. It's on October 22nd, and actually, now it's extended also to if you buy online. So it's not only in person. Quite honestly, I go every year, and I usually walk out, and at the bottom, it's like, you save $60. So for $5, I'm buying things I need anyway, in saving $60. And the main thing is, the fundraiser goes to the students of Edison. One other thing, one other date I want to throw out there. And by the way, if you want, if you're interested in that, Mrs. Campion, I'm sure will be at every event with them, through our building reps. You can always call over probably to the ETA office. Or any of our activities that are going on, we'll make sure that these are there for anyone that wants them. The final one is on, I'm sorry, excuse me, November 23rd. ETA is sponsoring a Trip to Radio City musical. It's that, that is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. So there are still seats available. The bus will leave from our office parking lot, 9:00 sharp. There are prime seats at 11 o'clock showing. There'll be time for people, again, if you want to go for lunch or walk the city a little bit before we head home. So if anyone's interested, our, one of our members, Marilyn Clark, is the person you would contact or through the ETA office. And one final statement, again, we're coming to you in the summer. Everybody enjoy the last couple weeks. Look forward to seeing everybody on the beginning of school and wish everyone a great, successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll buy that Boskov's thing. But I'm glad you mentioned about online because we are going to be in Atlantic City that day, some of us. It will work out. I was about to ask, is it over there? But it's online, so it works. Unless it's over there, we can buy in person. Thank you. Anyone else have public comments? Saying none, motion to end public comments?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lugo, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Schneider?
Second.
Mr. Romano, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.